Good evening. I now call to order the June 25, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Calabasas City Council. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Protem Bazagian and Council Members Albrecht Shapiro and Weintraub, as well as city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Speaker cards can be found in the back of the room. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can also request a device from our city clerk. We'll begin tonight with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join me. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Council Member Albrecht, seconded by Council Member Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Closed session. City Attorney, we met in closed session before this. Do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We did meet in closed session, discuss two matters of existing litigation, the City of Calabasas versus County Sanitation District Number Two, as well as Mountain Restoration Trust versus City of Calabasas. We also discussed one potential litigation matter and one anticipated litigation matter. There is no reportable action on any of the items discussed, and we will be adjourning to closed session after the end of this open session.
All right. Thank you. And we are very quickly to the top of the order. We're going to start tonight with a presentation by the Los Virginas Water District and Water and Wastewater Rate Structure. Director of Finance and Technology Brian Ritchie and Public Affairs Associate Ricky Clark will present tonight. Please come to the podium.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Kraut, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Ricky Clark, Public Affairs Associate for Los Virginas Municipal Water District, and I am joined by my colleague Brian Ritchie, Director of Finance and Technology. Now, we have about five minutes to share some updates on the district's recent efforts to improve water reliability, as well as our most recent rate study, so I'll get right into it. As most of us know, LVMWD is reliant on one imported source of water from the Northern Sierra Nevada Mountains through the State Water Project. This source faces several threats, including impacts of climate change, rising operational costs, as well as evolving regulations, both on the water quality and environmental sides. So these challenges have pushed the district to find new solutions, and those solutions largely involve water supply diversification. So the Pure Water Project, Los Virginas Triunfo, is our largest and most popular foray into diversification, and it will supply up to 30% of our water supply locally, beginning in just about five years. Most recently, we also partnered with tech startup Oceanwell to run a pilot of their new ocean desalination technology in our reservoir. That is ongoing. And although further out in time than the Pure Water Project, their Blue Water Farm technology could allow us to source up to 15% of our water supply locally from the ocean. So other sources that are kind of in the works include partnerships with other regional agencies for interconnections, much like the recently completed Los Virginas-Kaiagus Interconnection, as well as partnerships for groundwater banking. I say all that to say that during the last drought, the LVMWD Board made a promise to pursue any and all pathways to greater resiliency and reliability, and this is just a snapshot of those efforts. Now, these, like everything else, do come with costs. And in addition to the rising costs that I mentioned earlier, proactive investments like an advanced purification facility do cost money, and rate increases are part of the pie when it comes to covering these costs. So the district has embarked on a five-year rate study to ensure that we're properly funded and can continue to provide critical water service into the future. Now, before we get into the study, I just wanted to offer a quick refresher on the district's budget-based billing system. Each customer is given a unique water budget based on household factors, such as number of people in the household, as well as the size of the outdoor irrigable area. These and several other factors comprise a customer's overall water budget and ensures that they get enough water allocated to them based on their household. Now, customers will fall into one of the three tiers listed above: efficient, inefficient, and excessive. So our philosophy is that we don't want to dictate how customers use their water. We just want to provide them with the guidelines to ensure efficiency. Typically, customers who choose to exceed their water budgets will end up paying more money for their water. And to give you just a quick comparison of how our current rates compare to other water agencies in Southern California, you'll see that, first of all, we're the first bar for this to the left, and you'll see that the district is nowhere near the most expensive when it comes to our water rates, but we also like to make sure that we are charging enough to cover the costs of doing business while making much-needed investments to ensure our future. So with that, let's take a look at what these proposed rate changes look like and how it's going to impact our customers. Now, much like water budgets that I just touched on, rate impacts will vary greatly based on what tier the customer falls under, as well as the meter size and several other factors. So what we did for the sake of this presentation is we pulled the data to reflect our average customer, and what you'll see here essentially is what the average water bill looks like for a customer for the next five years, and that's based on the average number of units an efficient customer uses, as well as three people in their household. So, as you can see above, the average residential customer bill is going to increase for an average of about $11 over the next 10 years. So it does say up there through 2030. I do want to make a connection or a correction that it's actually through 2035. So we'll see an average increase of just over $10. Like I said, rate impacts vary greatly beyond the average, but the main takeaway here is that customers who stay efficient will be the least impacted, and as usual, inefficient and excessive customers are going to end up feeling that pain a little bit more when it comes to their water bill. So as always, we encourage our customers to be mindful about their water use and take advantage of the many resources that the district offers to do that. One of them, I included a snapshot up on the slide. That's actually our rate calculator that's live on our website as we speak, and that will help customers figure out how the proposed rate changes will impact them, specifically based on their unique budget. So I really just want to highlight again that these are proposed rates, and we're currently still in that rate study process. So the next steps will include public workshops that the district is going to host, both in person at the district headquarters in Calabasas, as well as virtually over Zoom, where we invite customers to join us, have any questions about these rate changes answered, and their concerns heard. And just to wrap it up and bring it home, securing our future through water reliability really does require these meaningful investments that we're pursuing, keeping conservation at the forefront of all of our water decisions, and keeping our rates aligned with these efforts. Water is not a commodity. It is a critical and invaluable service that we don't have the option to not meet into the future. So with that, I'd like to conclude our presentation with a link to the current rate study, as well as that bill calculator, and a QR code in case any of you all want to take a look at that now. Thank you for your time.
Sure, we will get, yeah, let's jump right on in. Are council questions? Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. I was just going to ask a quick one. Thank you for the presentation and the links. What time are the public hearings? I saw the 19th of August is one, and I didn't see the times on that slide.
I believe the in-person one is 6:00 PM? Yeah, and the virtual one, do you know the virtual one? Also at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments, Councilmember?
Thank you for that presentation, Ricky. It was terrific. I'd just like to comment on the taste of the water that we get from Los Virginas Municipal Water District.
Sure.
And I can assure you, based on my history living on Long Island, where the water in New York City and state is unbelievable, come from the Adirondacks, you are equal or better.
I'm happy to hear that. I would agree. That snowmelt is really hard to beat. Any other questions?
Councilmember Weintraub?
No, just a comment if we can also promote the meetings on the 19th and the 26th.
We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor Protem?
No, I have no questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, and before I let you go, I do want to just take this opportunity to say that I had the honor and privilege of attending the tour today with the Los Virginas Municipal Water District and the Metropolitan Water District, also joined by Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And we explored several things, but most importantly to this community is the Sepulveda feeder, Phase One, is going to, is already in process right now, is going to be, the materials has already been ordered for a lot of the electrical gear, and they're doing the pumps and stuff right now. What that means to us is that we will have a redundant supply of water coming up in the very near future. And Metropolitan's commitment is that if we hit a drought again like we did in the early, you know, 2021, 2022 era, that we will all buckle down together. It won't be a repeat of Los Virginas Municipal Water District losing our water supply while other water districts are thriving in theirs. So kudos to LVMWD for keeping up the pressure there, and to Metropolitan Water District for coming through with that. And I think this rate hike is very reasonable, considering the times that we're in and the strides that you've been making. And one last note is that I'm also privileged to represent the City of Calabasas on the brainstorming sessions that go on behind these public meetings. And if anybody has questions or comments and wants to reach out, I'm available.
Thank you, Mayor Kraut. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Gary, would you like to share?
Yeah, I'd like to share just a moment or so. You know, Metropolitan itself is raising its rates to all of us. So we have done the best, and many of you may remember that when I was elected, I would go around and I would say, "If you vote for me, I'll try to make it rain." Well, the last couple of winters, we've been very lucky, but luck is not what we're looking for. And as Councilman Kraut saw today, that Metropolitan, we have stayed on them. Our director Peterson has stayed on them to make sure that the system doesn't just go from one side, but goes all the ways around, so that we will be able to get Colorado water when it's necessary. Now, if there's drought in all sides, we're all going to take a haircut, which is exactly what they said this morning. But I want you to all know that we've worked very, very, very hard, months and months, it's three years that I'm on the board now, to make sure that we have water the next time there is a serious issue. There's also an issue with the piping in Calabasas, as many of you know, and we've taken a proactive view towards that. We've had some satellite views. We're working with some companies, and we're going to be proactively replacing that piping so we don't have leaks. So thank you again. It's always a pleasure to be here.
And I'll take one opportunity to introduce Gary Burns, because he didn't introduce himself. Gary Burns is the director, one of the board members of the Los Virginas Municipal Water District, who represents the district of the City of Calabasas. If there's nothing further on this item, we want to thank Los Virginas Municipal Water District for coming out and sharing with us, and we'll move on to the next item, which is appointments to the Calabasas Community Foundation, presented by interim city clerk Kristy Bucksempa.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm pleased to provide the report for two appointments to the Calabasas Community Foundation to fill recent unscheduled vacancies. The foundation board consists of the city manager, who serves as the chair, the community services director, who serves as the secretary, the chief financial officer, and two Calabasas residents, one of which must be a business owner. Following an open recruitment period and applicant interviews, appointees have been nominated by the chair of the board, and appointments are subject to the confirmation of the city council. Tonight, it's recommended that the city council confirm the appointments of Pam Ross and Jennifer Jasabi to fill unscheduled vacancies on the Calabasas Community Foundation with terms ending in January 2026. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, so first, I'll ask any council questions or comments on the item. Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to confirm the appointments? Some.
Second.
That was moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, fantastic. I'd like to ask Ms. Ross to come to the podium for the city clerk to conduct your oath of office. For the record, Jennifer, I got to pronounce this name, don't I? Jasabi Mahajer was unable to attend this evening and will take her oath at the next available opportunity.
Aye, Pamela Ross.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies? Against all enemies?
Against all enemies?
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic?
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or a purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties?
Upon which I'm about to enter?
About?
Which I'm about to enter?
That I'm about to enter?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations again to Pam Ross and Jennifer Jasabi Mahajer on their appointments to the Calabasas Community Foundation. At this point, we're going to move on to council announcements, and I'm going to begin, as always, with Councilmember Albrecht.
I do have some announcements, and I'm very happy to make these because it's summertime, and being a parent, and many of us are here, there are some programs that everybody needs to know about. What am I going to do with my kids this summer? Well, one of the things you can do is go to the library. I was planning on doing this last week, and then our librarian actually made a list of things to do, much too long to read, but I'm just going to mention a few of them, highlights. It's both for adults, it's for K through five, and preschoolers. It's a tremendous opportunity. It's on our website, the city website. It's about three pages long, and I think there's a little bit something for everyone. Between online films, morning book clubs, Tuesday evening book clubs, An Amazing Race, it goes on and on, all grades, a little bit about animals, and a magician. So I would encourage you to go on the website. It's very, very good, because there's always something you're looking forward to do with the kids in the summertime. It's never enough. And my last announcement would be, as far as Senior Center is concerned, tomorrow, they're celebrating with a barbecue, their annual country western barbecue. It's at 5:30, and I'd grab a ticket before it's sold out. Thank you.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you very much. I will just mention, it's already been made public. I believe this Friday is the opening, grand opening of a new restaurant in the Commons Boulevard, BLVD Boulevard Steakhouse and Seafood. And then also coming up next week, we have the Fourth of July, although we are missing our fireworks as a community. We are thrilled to have a fun-run pet show and splash party at the Tennis and Swim Center. So please sign up for the fun-run, and those events you're interested in, through the City of Calabasas, you can do it online. And last but not least, we have a couple things, since this is our last meeting till August, I believe. We have two concerts, two more concerts at the lake upcoming, which is right next to the Tennis and Swim Center, July 20th at 6:00 PM, and August 3rd at 6:00 PM. And we want to give a thank you to our partnership with CPA for not only the Fourth of July, but also the concerts at the lake. Happy safe Fourth of July to everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub?
Thank you. I wanted to announce that the city's beach bus is back this summer and will start operating on July 1st, and there's more information on our city website. And I hope we can really get the message out about this. I think that, because it hasn't run in the last few years, we have to promote that. And then, as David mentioned, restaurants coming. Unfortunately, sometimes businesses close, and I know we've received a lot of questions, but Rite Aid is officially closing, and we were told around August 24th that Rite Aid in the Commons will be closing. So that is just something out of our control and out of the property owner's control, and we look forward to seeing what will occupy that space at a future time. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I wanted to thank everybody who showed up for the Creek Cleanup last Saturday. It was a great event and a longstanding tradition, cleaning up Los Virginas Creek. The good news is that there wasn't that much trash. We looked, and it was pretty clean. So thank you to the community for keeping the natural environment clean. This Friday is our Chamber of Commerce's 70th Anniversary Party at the Calabasas Country Club. And hard to believe that the chamber is 70 years old, but it is, it is, and we will be celebrating it there with an evening barbecue. And finally, one of the fun activities in town that comes around every summer is our dive-in movies, which we have at the Tennis and Swim Center. You can get information about it online on our website. Friday, last Friday, we had our first one, which was Cars, and so please check it out. We'll be running a few during the summer. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Don't forget, we have our summer concert series as well. You can find more details about that on our website. I have no additional announcements. Thank you all for the news you've shared. It's now time for general public comments for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comment during this period, speakers would be asked to state their name and the city they live in. You'll need to fill out a speaker card in the back of the room and give it to our city clerk. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council on items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The council is unable to respond due to state law, which prohibits the council from addressing any issues not on the agenda, but we are listening. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items? I have one card so far. It is from Daryl Terrell of Moreno Valley.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council, and the people of Calabasas. My name is Daryl Terrell. I came to you from the City of Moreno Valley in Riverside County. I'm here tonight because I believe in something simple but powerful, that government at its best doesn't wait for a crisis to act, it prevents one. Three years ago, a friend of mine, a good man, hard worker, and had his catalytic converter stolen from his job where I work at. He came out, he turned on the key, and what he heard wasn't an engine, it was chaos. The repair costs cost him thousands, and he missed work like others. He felt helpless. That moment stuck with me. I went out to make a difference. Since May 2022, I've been across Southern California and Central California into encourage city councils and board supervisors to consider adopting what I call the one-and-done catalytic converter unlawful possession ordinance. And what that does is, if a thief has one catalytic converter, has no proof of ownership, that person will pay a price. It would be a criminal charge. He might go, he or she might go to jail, because that's part of it. Because under state law, AB 641, it's nine or more. If they get caught, they get a slap on the wrist. It's a license violation. And they got to, if they don't have an automotive dismantled permit. So what that creates is a loophole that allows a person to steal up to eight catalytic converters, and nothing happens to them. So my thing is, as a community, as our cities throughout Southern California and Central, we have to work together to close that loophole. Because many people, like in my town where I live, in the City of Moreno Valley, I went out to Riverside County Board of Supervisors. It took me three times to have it adopted. All 28 cities adopted that ordinance. I've gone to Fresno, they have adopted that ordinance. And your nearby county Ventura is going to do a first reading. Kern County is going to do a first reading. Orange County is going to do a first reading. I feel passionate about this because I think we have to do something to hold these thieves accountable. Sacramento's not going to do it. We can do it. We can give our deputies the tools they need. Because if they're caught with one, it doesn't matter if they're caught with one or nine, they will be held accountable. They won't be very easy to walk away. So when they go to Cal, come to Calabasas, they know we mean business. They mean, if you do a crime in this town, you will be held accountable, not walk away. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any other cards? No, seeing none. We will move on to the next item then. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Yes, item nine, please.
Item nine, okay. And do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on any items on the consent calendar? No speaker cards? Okay. We'll move on to pulling item number nine then, which is Dial-A-Ride and Micro Transit Program Contract Award. Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. And the reason I pulled this off is it is something the council as a whole has pushed for for years and is getting better and better, and this is tremendous. So I would love it if you would please explain a little bit of detail about the project and also indicate the funding sources, and to clarify for the community where the funds come for, for this program.
Sure. Well, thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate that. I'll take the second question first, and then I'll turn it over to Trea. So the funding source is all local return money through LA Metro. There are no local funds or general funds that's being used for either program, Dial-A-Ride or Micro Transit. And Trea worked really hard on converting this program from a pilot program to a permanent program, going through the RFP process and working to the point we're at now to make an award to a new contractor. So Trea, you want to fill us in on some of the details?
Yes, so a little bit of our history, as our council is very much aware. We started with just a Dial-A-Ride program, operating Monday through Sunday, and we decided to remove our old trolley program that was operating 12 hours a day on Saturdays with nobody riding around, and change it into something that people could use on the weekends. So now we have door-to-door weekend transit through our micro transit, which utilizes the same contract as the Dial-A-Ride. And so what we have been doing is our pilot, where you have to call into our service provider, and you make the appointment, and everything's just kind of, you just do it by phone, and you don't have kind of that follow-up to make sure that, you know, when's the car actually going to be there? How do I pay? There's a lot of information that kind of gets missed, it seems. So as we were going through and getting council direction on what we did want to do with this project, even if we even wanted to make it a permanent project, and the decision really was to go with an app-based program, and that's what VIA is. It is completely, it'll have the app, it'll have the vehicles, it'll have everything we have now with the app. And it'll just make writing so much more easy for everybody to use.
And I just want to applaud you again on all the hard work and effort the whole team did, because this is over almost a two, it could be a $2.5 million project or item, and no general funds are used in this, and it provides a service for the community, and it is easy to use, just like, as you mentioned, the ReportLifter, Uber. There's an app-based for this. So thank you very much, and I know our city's going to continue to appreciate and use this.
Okay, there are no other questions or comments?
I have two questions since the item was pulled. Thank you. This is great, and I know we're all really excited about it. Just two questions. When will the app and everything go live?
We are working with our service provider on the details of that. We're at a 12-week launch window once everything is signed.
And just because people are always asking in the community, in terms of the trolley, when it's going around on the weekends, can you just explain real quick the hours?
Yes, so we changed- Yes, so we changed the trolley from operating 12 hours a day every single Saturday. Now it operates Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend, and it operates 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Thank you.
And it's free. Once you see it, the schedule's online, cityofcalabasas.com/trolley. And when you see it, just hop onboard. There's no fare.
Thank you so much. And looking forward to having VIA onboard.
Any other questions or comments on item nine? No other items in? Can I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight on the approved consent calendar was the adoption of an ordinance. I will read the title into the record and waive the full reading of the text. Ordinance Number 2025414, amending Chapter 2.04 of the Calabasas Municipal Code relating to city council member salaries. With that closed, we're moving on to the next item, a public hearing for the fiscal year 2025-2026, Engineers' Report for Landscaping Lighting Act District Numbers 22, 24, 27, and 32, Proposed New or Increased Assessments for Calabasas Park Estates, Certification of Balloting Results, and Approval of Final Engineers' Reports, Diagram, and Assessments. Tonight presenting will be Public Works Director Curtis Castle.
Thank you. So we don't have a formal presentation or PowerPoint. Just as a reminder, we're continuing the public hearing from last meeting. Receiving any public testimony or comment regarding a Prop 218 balloting that occurred in Calabasas Park Estates for a 10% increase to their levy. We will also be approving the final engineers' report, which is the tool that allows the city to implement the levy citywide and then essentially extract those funds from LA County. With that, staff is available for any questions.
And Mr. Castle, if I could ask you, would you explain just for the public that might be watching what a landscape lighting district is and how the city is involved in that? Just give us a really quick overview of that.
Sure. So the city inherited these from the county, and they are special districts that were approved by people who live within that district. So these, these group, these zones and districts were created by the community members. And they voted to pay an increased levy. And it often gets called property tax because it's paid with property tax, but it's actually not part of your property tax for the landscape lighting district. It's a special assessment, it's a levy. And the city does a report every year to certify the boundaries and the levy amount and takes that to the county. And we use those funds that we get from the county to provide landscape maintenance service in the vast majority of the city. Because the vast majority of the city is covered by these districts.
Thank you. Should we begin with any questions from city council? Councilmember Shapiro? No? No?
I have a question.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protam?
Curtis, you know, we got some comments last time from one of the HOA presidents in the parks, in Calabasas Park, in Landscape District 22. And then we got, more recently, the council got a letter from that same individual. It was a longstanding HOA president of a very large HOA up there. And I wondered if, you know, it, some of these issues that were raised seemed to come back and be like the same issue we've heard before. And I had felt it was resolved, but I guess it's not. So could you address some of the concerns in the letter and how staff can, going forward, address those concerns? Because they have directly to do with this subject. I mean, the whole reason we got the letter was because this was on the agenda.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for the question. So the concern that was raised was, it was related to the landscape and lighting districts, but it was also related to the budget and the allocation that was approved. So I did, I did have a chance to speak with that community member, and there was some confusion that the allocation, the cost allocation plan that councils approved with the budget was going to increase the assessments in these districts. So I clarified that, that the increases are only CPI and by special vote like Calabasas Park Estates is doing tonight, that the allocation is not an increase. And that to do increases outside CPI, the city has to go through a Prop 218 ballot. So I think I've resolved that primary concern. And there's still some more follow-up to do, but the majority of those concerns are actually around the cost allocation plan.
Okay. Going forward, maybe we can work on, you know, I don't know what, why the communication seems to not always be there or maybe late reporting of things. Maybe we could have a better rapport. Maybe you can come back with some ideas internally. Doesn't have to be at the council meeting or anything. But thank you for contacting the individual.
Thank you. And I will just state, just for the record, that we are going to be scheduling some virtual meetings to discuss the cost allocation and how it affects the landscape and lighting districts. And that'll be in August and September. So we're putting ourselves out there to continue the conversation with the community.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. I'm now going to open the public hearing. Ballots for the assessment for the Calabasas Park Estates will be accepted until the close of the public hearing and can be submitted to the city clerk. Do any members of the public have a ballot to submit at this time? Seeing none? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Very popular item tonight. Seeing no speakers, I will now close the public hearing. We would be now taking a brief recess to conduct the ballot assessment tabulation. Do we need to continue with that? We will. Once the ballots have been counted, we will reopen the public hearing and announce the results. The public is welcome to observe the ballot counting, which will take place in the adjoining conference room. We're going to take a break at this point until the ballots are counted. Any idea how long that will be?
We can move on in the next, can't we? Move on?
So we think that will be about a 15-minute break. So we recommend taking a break now because our concern was that if we go into the second item in the next public hearing, then we would either have to interrupt that public hearing or require that the public stay for that second public hearing. And so best is about a 15-minute recess to come back with that tabulation.
Okay. We'll recess for 15 minutes, reconvene at 8 o'clock.
...
All right, good evening. We are now reconvening back, reconvening the meeting back to order. The ballots have been tabulated and we will now reopen the public hearing. City Clerk, would you please read the results into the record?
Thank you, sir. The tabulation for the proposed Landscape and Lighting Act District Number 22 for the Calabasas Park Estates HOA has concluded. All ballots received by the deadline have been counted and recorded in accordance with Proposition 218. The ballots were weighted according to the proportional financial obligation of each parcel. A total of 160 ballots were received and counted. Of these, 102 ballots representing $158,641.62 or 64% of the total assessment were in protest. And 58 ballots representing $90,207.98 or 36% of the total assessment were in support. Based on the weighted tabulation, the threshold for a majority protest was $158,641.62 or 64% needed for a majority protest. Because the number of protests did exceed this threshold, the proposed assessment has therefore failed and will not be levied. I certify these results and can confirm the assessment has failed. That concludes the report.
Okay. Does the council have any comments? Councilmember Shapiro?
It's more a question for staff or the city manager, whoever would be appropriate. What does that mean at this point? Thank you.
I don't see Curtis here, so I'll take that. So, so the, the assessment in any district covers the services of that district. And so what we will need to do now as staff is work with the HOA that represents that district to look at a budget that reflects the actual revenues coming in. So now knowing that there won't be any new revenues or an increase in revenues, we'll have to look at services that are within that budget amount.
Thank you.
Okay, so that motion or that item aside, there is another part of what we're looking at here today, which is the 2025-2026 Engineers' Report, along with the approval of the final Engineers' Report diagrams and assessment and certifying the ballot results. And for that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second?
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by, I'm sorry, moved by Councilmember Albrecht, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay, we are now on to item number 14, which is file number SPR 2023-004, OTP 2023-006, LTM 2024-002, SCP 2023-002, SGNP 2023-001, and SGN 2023-030. A request for a site plan review, oak tree permit, lot merger, scenic corridor permit, sign program, and sign permit for construction of a new two-story retail automobile dealership for Kia, inclusive of 45,780 square feet of car dealership and a 2,117 square foot car wash facility. The subject site is a vacant lot previously occupied by Spurling Nursery, located at 24460 Calabasas Road, APN Number 2069009-008 and APN 2069-009-020. Our planner, Jacqueline Rackerby, will present the report. And if you would, I did have a request from the public. We're having hard times hearing particularly the microphones on this side, so make sure you speak clearly and into the microphone for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kraut. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Before you tonight is a request to construct a two-story retail automobile dealership for Kia. This project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. The notice was also posted on the city's website and throughout the city at all required locations. Public correspondence regarding the project was included within your packets as Attachment L and public comments received on the environmental documents specifically are included within Attachment J. So here you can see an aerial view of the subject site. The site is on the south side of Calabasas Road, outlined in green here. It's between Murow Road and Parkway Calabasas. The site is zoned CL, which is Commercial Limited, within the commercial auto retailer overlay zone and scenic corridor overlay zone, and is surrounded by properties zoned Commercial Business, Commercial Limited, Open Space Development Restricted, and Residential Single Family. Surrounding land uses include car dealerships, inventory storage lots, undeveloped property, and residential neighborhoods to the south. So in this enlarged aerial view, you can see the subject site, again highlighted in green here. You can see the adjacent BMW dealership to the west and the vehicle storage lot and the Cadillac dealership to the east. The subject property is comprised of two parcels with a total gross lot area of 10.94 acres. The project site is currently vacant, but the prior use occupying the site was the Spurling Nursery, which operated from 1973 to 2015. The commercial structures associated with the business have since been demolished. However, the site contains remnant paved areas, foundations, retaining walls, and graded pads associated with the former plant nursery, which are concentrated in the northern area of the lot. The southern portions of the site beyond the area utilized by Spurling Nursery are enveloped, with much of the site steeply sloped and covered in oak trees. The northern area of the site is the flattest portion of the site with the least amount of oak trees and other natural resources. Here you can see photos of the existing site. On the left is taken from the front of the site and on the right is taken from across the street looking at the site. As you can see, story poles are currently installed. They were installed on July 29, 2024, as required per the city's story pole procedures. Additionally, in these photos, you can see those remnant paving, walls, steps, et cetera, from the previous Spurling Nursery. So the proposed project includes construction of a new 45,780 square foot two-story car dealership for Kia and an ancillary 2,117 square foot one-story car wash facility. The project involves removal of three oak trees, including one heritage oak tree, and encroachment into the protected zone of 21 oak trees. The project also includes onsite signage, the merging of two lots, a right-of-way dedication, and associated frontage improvements, including an extended shared center lane and a dedicated curbside vehicle inventory unloading area. So an auto dealership is a permitted land use in the CL zoning district within the CAR overlay zone. And the requested applications for the scope of work include a site plan review permit, an oak tree permit, a scenic corridor permit, a lot merger, a sign program, and a sign permit. In regards to review authority, the municipal code stipulates that removal of any living heritage oak tree requires that a planning commission recommendation be forwarded to the city council for the city council's consideration. Additionally, the municipal code states that monument signage within the Calabasas Road District over 20 feet and up to 25 feet in height and over 100 square feet up to 150 square feet in area may be approved by the city council following review by the planning commission. For both of these reasons, per Section 17.60.020 of the municipal code, the final review authority for the project and all associated applications is the city council. So here we have the overall site plan. This depicts the entirety of the property. As you can see, the proposed development is concentrated in the northern areas of the site and the areas that were previously utilized by Spurling Nursery. The remaining southern portion of the site, which is everything shown in gray here, will not be altered as part of the project. And as previously mentioned, the southern areas of the site are more steeply sloped and contain many oak trees and other natural resources. You can see in blue here is the proposed buildings, the dealership and the car wash facility, and in brown is the limits of grading and paving associated with the project. So this is an enlarged site plan that shows the proposed improvements in greater detail. The main dealership building will be two-story and 45,780 square feet and a detached one-story 2,117 square foot car wash facility will be located at the rear of the building. The site will also be improved with a parking area and drive aisle at the front of the building. This drive aisle will run along the western side of the building, leading to more parking, inventory areas, a trash enclosure area, and a fire turnaround at the rear of the site. The dealership is set back 58 feet 7 inches from the front property line and 20 feet minimum is required. 7 feet 2 inches from the east side property line and 0 feet minimum is required. 31 feet 8 inches from the west side property line, 0 feet minimum is required. And 776 feet 11 inches from the rear property line with 0 feet minimum required. The proposed site coverage is 5.69%, with 72% being the maximum. And the proposed pervia surface percentage is 84.9%. And I do want to mention, this is approximately the same pervia surface percentage as the existing conditions, since the site is already paved. And 22% is the minimum pervia surface required. The proposed FAR is 0.08, with .60 being the maximum allowed for an auto sales use. Therefore, the project complies with all development standards of the zoning district. So here we have the floor plans. On the first floor, it's primarily Service and Parts Department, which is shown in yellow, with a small lobby area at the front with elevator access up to the showroom offices, and that lobby area is shown in blue. So looking at the second floor plan, customer and inventory parking area is shown in red at the rear of the building. And the dealership showroom and office, which is shown in blue, will be located at the front of the building. So the total gross floor area of the dealership is approximately 33,700 square feet, which is different than the total building area of about 45,000 square feet because gross floor area excludes that open parking facility on the second floor. So here on the roof plan, you can see the ramp, shown in dark gray, leading from the adjacent grade up to the roof. You can see the two stair towers, the elevator tower, and the solar canopy, which are all features that will project above the roof line. All rooftop mechanical equipment, you can see those depicted adjacent to the stair towers, will be screened from view by the stair towers and proposed parapets on the roof. Here we have the front elevation and the rear elevation of the building. The specific colors and materials are depicted on the colors and materials sheet within the project plan set. The front elevation will have exterior storefront glazing, black bands comprised of aluminum composite panels, and an exterior insulated finish system in the color Coventry Gray. At the rear of the building, you can see the rooftop solar carport to comply with building code requirements. You can also see in this rear elevation that due to the grade change, the building is effectively one-story at the rear. So this ramp up to the roof begins at the adjacent grade on the second floor up to the top of the roof. And the trash enclosure area is also shown in this rear elevation. We have these sides of the dealership. This is the west side and the east side. The sides of the dealership will be the same color in exterior insulation finish system in Coventry Gray as well as block painted Coventry Gray on the eastern side along the ramp up to the roof. Side elevations also show these areas in dark gray right here, which are openings towards the rear of the building where the second floor parking area will be located. And in these side elevations, you can see the stair towers, the elevator towers, and the solar carport, which are projecting above the roof line. On the west side of the building is the drive aisle that leads up to the rear of the building and on the east side is a five-foot wide pedestrian walkway. And in this slide, you can see a rendering depicting the location of the monument sign as well as the building-mounted signage on the building. Additionally, you can also see the black band at the top of the second floor as well as the black band at the top of the first floor between the two floors. And this black band between the two floors was incorporated per the recommendation from the Architecture Review Panel. This is another rendering, an aerial view rendering. This is looking southwest. And just to orient you, you can see the existing Cadillac dealership on the left-hand side of this image, the existing BMW dealership on the right-hand side of this image. In the background, at the top of this ridge line here, are the West Ridge and Vista Point HOAs. And right in the middle is the rendering of the proposed Kia dealership. In regards to surrounding dealerships, we have Audi, which is furthest down Calabasas Road to the west. We have the BMW dealership, which is directly adjacent to the west. Cadillac, which is adjacent to the east. And then Mercedes, which is further down Calabasas Road to the east. You can see from these photos that all dealerships share similar design elements. Many of them are more modern in architectural style. And white, black, silver, and gray are common colors for the designs. In regards to previous reviews, the Development Review Committee reviewed the proposed project on May 9, 2023. The Architecture Review Panel reviewed the proposed project on July 28, 2023 and found that the proposed project is compatible with the aesthetics of the surroundings and recommended approval of the project. Additionally, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed project on December 19, 2024, May 1, 2025, and May 15, 2025, and adopted Planning Commission Resolution Number 2025-809, which recommended approval of the project to the planning, to the city council. So there are a total of 54 oak trees, including four off-property trees that were addressed within the project oak tree report. And the protected zones of those trees are shaded in green on this slide. I do want to point out, this is a small portion of the many oak trees that exist on site. The entirety of the property was not surveyed since the trees on the hillside in the southern portions of the lot are outside of the area in which potential impacts to the trees could occur. There are three coast live oak trees, tree number 101, 102, and 150 that are proposed for removal as a result of the project. Of the three trees proposed for removal, only one tree, tree number 102, is a heritage oak tree with a diameter of 46 inches and would require removal due to its location along the eastern property line, approximately two feet away from the proposed building's footprint. The other two trees proposed for removal are non-heritage trees, tree number 101 and number 150. These are both located within the excavation areas for the proposed project retaining walls along the eastern and western property boundaries. Additionally, 21 oak trees will be encroached upon as a result of the proposed construction. A full analysis of the impacts to each tree is included with an applicant-submitted oak tree report. Of the 21 encroached upon trees, 19 of the trees are expected to experience no long-term adverse impacts. However, the encroachments for two of the trees will be extensive. And this is tree number 116 and 149, shown right here and right here, outlined in red. And these trees may be harmed as a result of the project. However, in the opinion of the project arborist, if the recommendations and mitigation measures in the report are followed, these trees, as well as all other trees encroached upon, should recover. Mitigation measures and recommendations are contained within the submitted oak tree report, which include a five-year monitoring period and an inch-for-inch replacement if any encroached upon oak trees die as a result of construction impacts. Mitigation oak trees for the removals will be planted behind the building within the undeveloped areas of the site, adjacent to the existing oak trees. And you can see this area right here, clouded in gray, labeled as mitigation planting area is where those mitigation oak trees will be planted, behind the building and again next to those adjacent oak trees. So in regards to environmental review, a draft initial study slash mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project in accordance with the CEQA guidelines. The draft IS/MND was circulated for public review on November 6, 2024, for a period of 30 days. During the public review period, four comment letters were received. These comments were addressed within the response to comments within the final MND. And in addition to that response to comments, ATE, which is a traffic subconsultant of the city's environmental consultant in Viacom, had prepared an additional memo in regards to traffic, separate from the environmental document, and that memo was included in the planning commission packets as Exhibit O. So the final IS/MND identifies the following areas where the project may have a potential impact on the environment: biological resources, geology and soils, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, tribal-cultural resources. And as fully documented in the final IS/MND, all areas listed as potentially significant have been mitigated to levels that are no longer significant due to project modifications and/or inclusion of mitigation measures. So in regards to signage, the sign program shows five building-mounted signs as depicted on the elevations. We have Kia at the front of the building, which is sign number two. Hello, which is the name of the franchisee on the front of the building, which is sign number three. And then we have Delivery, which will be on the front of the building, sign number four. And on the side of the building, again, we have another sign for Kia and a sign for Service. So that's sign number five and sign number six. All five signs are within the allowable dimensions per the municipal code with a total with a total area of a hundred and twenty-five square feet for all building-mounted signs combined. The municipal code requires the total building-mounted sign area to be less than the length of the dealership frontage, which is a hundred and twenty-seven linear feet. So at a hundred and twenty-five square feet, it meets this requirement. There's also one monument sign proposed for the project, and this is sign number one, shown right here. This monument sign was originally proposed at the west side of the driveway, adjacent to the property line, but after concerns arose regarding sightlines between those two driveways, the applicant relocated the monument sign to the east side of the driveway in the location you see here. The proposed monument sign air, the proposed monument sign is twenty feet in height and a hundred and five square feet in area. Per section seventeen point thirty point zero eight zero of the municipal code, a monument sign within the Calabasas Road District over a hundred square feet and up to a maximum of a hundred and fifty square feet may be approved by the city council upon finding that the increased sign area is necessary to allow the applicant visibility comparable to that enjoyed by a substantial number of other properties, which includes the adjacent BMW dealership and Audi dealership in the Calabasas Road District. Therefore, the proposed project requires a final decision by the city council due to the area of the monument sign. In regards to parking, the municipal code requires one parking space per forty-five square feet of showroom, which is twenty-eight spaces, one parking space per five hundred square feet of service area, which is forty-one spaces, one parking space per two hundred square feet for parts, which is seven spaces, and one parking space per two thousand square feet of outdoor display, which is one space. So that totals to seventy-seven spaces required under the municipal code. The municipal code does not require inventory parking spaces, and the code does not differentiate between the number of spaces required to be designated for customers or employees. The applicant is proposing seventy-seven parking spaces. Thirty-nine will be dedicated for customers, and thirty-eight will be for employees, which is in compliance with the seventy-seven minimum spaces required. They're also proposing eighty-four spaces for display and inventory. And again, I want to mention, no inventory spaces are required per the municipal code, since inventory is not regulated by the code. As you can see in these images, this is the site plan with the parking spaces color-coded. So we have customer parking in red and inventory in blue. You can see customer parking at the front of the building, at the rear of the building, and then inventory at the rear. This is the second floor plan, where again, we have customer and inventory parking. And this is the roof plan, where we have, again, inventory parking and employee parking. So concerns regarding the proposed driveway location have been submitted by the adjacent property owner to the west and are included within your packets as Attachment L, as well as included as public comment within Attachment J, which is the environmental document. The applicant had paused the project back in December to try to work through those comments received on the environmental document. Since then, staff has participated in several meetings with both the applicant and the owners of the adjacent dealership, seeking to address and resolve the concerns that had been raised. Ultimately, both parties could not come to a resolution on all of those issues, but the applicant has proposed a few changes. Number one was the relocation of their monument sign from the western side of the driveway, between the two driveways, to the eastern side of the driveway to try to alleviate any potential concerns about the sign blocking sightlines of drivers that were exiting the adjacent driveway. Additionally, the other potential change that the applicant has proposed is a possible alternative driveway location, which is included within the Planning Commission packets as Exhibit N. You can see that alternate location on this slide. It depicts the driveway shifted nine feet further to the east, so providing for a twenty-foot separation between driveways instead of the eleven-foot separation currently proposed. So you can see that alternate configuration right here. The alternate location would result in the loss of one parking space, but it would not require any alterations to the project's ADA path, the display area at the front, the project's retaining walls, or electrical and utility locations. The alternate location was analyzed in full by ATE and the city's Public Works Department as Exhibit O and Exhibit P within the Planning Commission packets. The current project was ultimately found to be the preferred approach, and the Planning Commission ultimately recommended approval of the current project and not the alternative. So the project also involves a right-of-way dedication to align the front of the project site with the existing sidewalk in front of the BMW dealership, since the front property lines of this property and the adjacent lot to the west are not currently aligned, which prevents a sidewalk connection. By dedicating approximately the first twenty feet of parcel A to the city, in this area right here, there will be sufficient room to accommodate a two-way left-turn lane in front of the property, to extend the sidewalk along the front of the property, and to accommodate a bike lane. Extending the center lane from its current endpoint further west on Calabasas Road, which you can see ends in this area right here, will allow for left turns in and out of the proposed driveway, and will provide for safer turning in and out of the adjacent BMW secondary driveway, which currently does not benefit from a left-turn lane. As you can see in red above, an eight-foot no-parking zone will be adjacent to the driveway, along with an approximately seventy-five-foot loading zone area, which will accommodate trucks for vehicle loading and unloading. If the alternate driveway location discussed in the previous slide is pursued, then this loading zone area would be shortened by about nine feet, which is part of the discussion at Planning Commission meeting as to why they did not recommend approval of the alternate design. The alternate driveway location, though, is still something that the city council can consider tonight. So with that, staff concludes that the proposed automobile dealership is in allowed use in the Commercial Limited Zoning District and Commercial Auto Retailer Overlay Zone. The proposed project conforms to the development standards of the CL zoning district, the CAR overlay zone, and the scenic corridor overlay zone, and compliance is documented within the written staff report. The ARP and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project. And as fully documented in the final IS slash MND, all areas listed as potentially significant have been mitigated to levels that are no longer significant due to project modifications and inclusion of mitigation measures. So the recommended action is consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation that the city council adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one nine seven four, adopting the MND and approving the project. File numbers SPR dash twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four, OTP dash twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six, LTM dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two, SCP dash twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two, SGNP dash twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, and SGN dash twenty twenty-three dash zero three zero. Thank you. I am available for questions, and we do also have the applicant here for a quick presentation as well.
Okay, why don't we take the quick presentation by the applicant first, and then we'll go to some council questions before I open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Crowe, council members. My name is Dustin Wimmer. I work with Diamond West. We're a local planning and engineering firm. I reside in Newbury Park, but our office is over here on Calabasas Road. With me tonight is Chris Morris with Hello Auto Group, the owners of the land and developers, along with members from HT, the architecture firm working on the project, as well as Lee Newman Design Group, representative, the landscape architect. They're all available to answer any questions as needed by the city council. So I'll kind of start, and there's, I'll try to make it kind of quick. There's probably some redundancy between my presentation. Jacqueline did a very thorough presentation, so maybe just walk you through. We've been working on this project a little over three out, three years. Our first kind of official action was to conduct a first community forum, which we did in November twenty twenty-two, which was back in the good old COVID days, which we did a Zoom meeting. And there was a few members of the public that attended, but no real, you know, negative feedback. We got really good, positive feedback during that meeting. So we kind of quickly turned around and did a pre-application, so we could also get staff input of what we were thinking about doing and get that early input. And that was in December twenty twenty-two. We took about four or five months after that and prepared all the kind of more final designs for a formal application submittal, which we did in April twenty-three, got our first review in May by the city, and resubmitted in June. We felt like we were pretty far along. We were ready to do our second community forum. We were able to present that to the community, which also really didn't receive any negative feedback at that moment, so it was really positive. And so we continued forward to the Architecture Review Panel. They were very complimentary. They asked us to do a couple revisions, which we also felt were actually very positive and made for a better project. I think Jacqueline mentioned the one, which was to kind of replicate that band along the front. We're really kind of proud of that, that elevation. We think it's a, you know, a very attractive building. And we were happy to get their kind of support, but also their input to, to make it a better project. So there was between July twenty-three and March twenty-five, we were, you know, kind of working out all the details with staff, getting through all the back and forth and working through many, many, you know, environmental technical reports and the MND prepared by the city's consultant. And in May, we were able to get to the Planning Commission and get their recommendation for approval, which brings us to night. So kind of backing up to kind of our initial design goals, I had actually worked on a couple other attempts at this site. There was a Nissan dealership that was being proposed and actually went through and submitted an application to the city. And I also worked on a Jaguar Land Rover, which did a community forum. And I get a little bit more about, you know, that experience, but it was kind of two-part. I think we were, we were struggling with meeting the city's regulations with the designs. There was also cost implications. It was a much bigger building with much more parking, and it's, it was kind of challenging to get to that point. So when we kind of started again, we wanted to make sure we were able to do a much more compact footprint, and how could we accomplish that? And I think the design team did a very good job to work through that and also ownership working with Kia to get them their acceptance in what we were thinking about doing. And kind of some of those goals were to figure out how to do a very compact building and development footprint, working within the existing development footprint of the Spurling Nursery, looking at preserving the steeper hillsides, minimizing oak tree impacts, and working through the vast kind of array of regulations through the city zoning, fire department regulations, CEQA requirements, and trying to put all that together to the project you have in front of you tonight. We also had the, you know, the opportunity to enhance the Calabasas frontage, kind of finish our part of the overall Calabasas Road improvements. We also obviously have to meet all the Kia band requirements and get a facility that's a, going to be an efficient, well-run facility and have all the components necessary to accomplish that. Seen some of these pictures. As mentioned, the buildings were demoed, I think right on six or seven years ago or so, but all the remnants of the, the concrete and flatwork and other improvements still remain from the old Spurling Nursery. And also you see on the right, there's no sidewalks, so people have to walk in the dirt and around, kind of maybe not the most safe and accessible routes. Looking at the site from an aerial, kind of highlighted here, the old nursery footprint. And so that, that was one of the goals, is how do we stay within that existing development footprint? And that's, that was kind of one of the kind of guiding principles of trying to accomplish developing the site. Here is looking at a survey where, outlined in gray, is that, again, that development footprint. It's about four acres of the eleven acres of the site. This is a slope map that kind of gives you, each color represents a, a slope steepness. And so your yellow and green areas are your less steep slopes, and then the kind of, as you get to the darker reds and purples of the steeper portions. And this just happens to align somewhat with the existing kind of Spurling Nursery footprint. So kind of working within those constraints and trying to stay on the, the more flat portions of the site. And kind of the final kind of major constraint is your kind of natural vegetation. The dark green areas represent your mostly coast live oak and oak trees and walnuts. And then the light green area is kind of all your other native habitat, sugar bush, California sagebrush, and other kind of native habitat up kind of on the southern, or sorry, the northern portion of the site, southern portion of the site. So with all that, looking at all the constraints, working through all the regulations, this is the site plan that we came up with. And taking access off of the west side, again, very compact development footprint. And you'll see in the light green area are all the existing oak trees, kind of oak woodland, really. And kind of the compromise, if you will, that we had to figure out is, we ended up trying to preserve this one large heritage oak tree that we're proposing to remove. And let's see if I can, I don't use this, you know, the thing's not working. Can you point that out? Where it's on? Yeah, so the previous two dealerships that I worked on, we actually were able to preserve that, but then the building ended up shifting further into the hillside. And the Nissan dealership proposed eighteen oak tree removals. And I think there's seven or eight heritage oak trees in that kind of bundle of trees. So as soon as we tried to avoid the one tree, in order to get a decent-sized dealership that's, that's functional, we end up pushing into the hillside and pushing into that whole oak grove. And so the compromised position, which we felt was the least impactful, was to propose to remove the one heritage oak tree. And so that was kind of the give and take of the design kind of choices. Here's a kind of a cross-section of the site, kind of illustrating how this, you know, you can see where the building's in the lowest portions of the site, and then the steeper kind of undeveloped portions. And then kind of on the far right would be where the homes are at the top of the ridge. Another kind of back and forth, we worked with LA County Fire. We have a larger entrance. We have a twenty-eight-foot driveway, which they want for any building that's over thirty feet. So the front of our building is thirty-five feet tall. But as you drive up the hill, we basically have a one-story building. So the, the entrance, the kind of the main portion is twenty-eight feet wide, and it's twenty-six as you go around. We have to get a turnaround in there and also allow for pedestrian access around the building. So that's another kind of consideration that we have to figure out how to solve when we're designing a facility, especially in a, you know, high-fire zone area. Here's kind of the branding, the interior look, very kind of classy, latest kind of Kia look. But all the different, you know, components that every dealership has, you know, finding room for the showroom, administration, service, parts, parking, vehicle display, and vehicle inventory. And as was discussed during the Planning Commission meeting, you know, we're, this project will require an off-site inventory storage lot to, to accomplish the project, which allows us to keep that compact footprint. And that was another kind of discussion internally, making sure that that works, you know, financially for, you know, Hello Auto Group. And they've done that in the past, and it's something they're comfortable with. But the benefit to the city is, you know, there's a lot less improvement, which means a lot less impact, a lot less pavement, things like that. So it's a, to me, kind of a win-win solution that we were able to come up with. I'll kind of run through this relatively quickly, because this is already covered. I do, I do want to point out, this is the first floor plan. And one thing that kind of makes this project also a little bit different, that also allowed us to have a more compact footprint, is the showroom's on the second level, and that's somewhat, it's not the first of its kind, but it's, it's not as traditional. But what that does, I think, creates a much more attractive frontage. So when you look at that building, if, if you feel like, hey, that looks pretty, pretty sharp, a lot of that's because the showroom's on the second level. And what many dealerships will do is put all their facilities on the first level, and they just have parking. And then you're trying to figure out how to disguise the parking lot that's sitting on the second level. And so in this case, it's actually usable space, and it's, it's lit up, and it's, it's actually very attractive from the, from the street frontage. The other thing to point out, because I know there was some concerns expressed about, you know, vehicle stacking. If you look at the service bay, we kind of see that with the icons of the cars. You can see that, you know, twelve cars can easily fit in our service bay. We have three lanes. And so we don't feel like there's going to be any issues with cars stacking outside of the building when people come drop their car off for service. The other thing to think about when it comes to inventory or parking, which doesn't get really calculated in the city's calculation, is that's twelve vehicles, and we have twenty service space. When someone drops their car off, those vehicles are going to be in those locations as well. So that's another, you know, thirty, forty parking spaces that aren't really classified as parking spaces where vehicles will be stored when they're being worked on. Here's the second level. Again, the, the front half that faces the street is the showroom. And then right behind that is additional parking and inventory. And then there's also a, a roof deck that goes on top that's additional inventory storage. Looking at it from a cross-section view, you can see in the front, the first floor lobby, entrance into the service, drive-in parking. And then basically, the, the service bays are for the most part of in a basement format, and they're below grade. And then again, showroom and administration facing the street. Kind of another illustration kind of showing where the development's closer to the street, lowest, lower elevations, and we're preserving, you know, approximately five to six acres of that upper hillside to remain natural. Here's an up close of our street improvements. Again, we're dedicating twenty feet of right-of-way to align the sidewalk and curb and gutter with the adjacent BMW dealership. We'll be installing street trees and sidewalks. And as mentioned, there's a loading zone for vehicle drop-offs along the street, which was a request, a requirement from staff. So we're not parking in the, in the center lane median when, when cars are being dropped off. So here's an existing street view. Again, someone walking on the, the dirt. And then our final rendering, where, like I said, we're kind of very proud at both the, kind of the sensitive environmental design, but also a very attractive building. So project benefits, again, improving Calabasas Road along the project frontage, improving kind of this blighted, vacated property, kind of doing a thoughtful, environmental, sensitive design. The project will bring in significant sales tax revenue to the city. We're helping to complete the city's vision of the West Calabasas Road planning corridor, as well as the automotive retail overlay zone and providing additional job opportunities here. here in the city. So with that, I'm available for questions, as well as with the rest of the design team and ownership.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any council questions for the applicant or the city planner? And if we could limit this to questions, we're going to then open the public hearing, and we'll do our comments after the public hearing. But if you have any questions, now would be the time. Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. Since you're up there, I'll ask you the first question. That's on the fire access slide you had from the fire department for the turnaround area. It was hard to tell, is that at or over or on the car wash location it was highlighted, it looked like?
No, no, it's completely outside of the buildings. It's just a paved area where the Hammerhead Fire Department turnaround is located. Yeah, it's on pavement.
Okay, so that isn't the area where the car, right near where the car wash is? Okay, that's good. Thank you. Well, there are questions or comments? And just to confirm if I saw it correctly in the presentation by staff and your recent comment as well, deliveries will take place in the loading area as opposed to instead on the street in the center median or center space for the road, correct?
That's correct, yes.
That's it for questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Thank you. I had a question for staff. Do all the dealerships have the requirement for a loading zone along Calabasas Road? And if not, can you explain why Kia does instead of loading in the middle of the road?
Well, I think it has to do with the time of development of those dealerships. Acura, at the time, that is now Audi, was here before we were even a city, right? And then we developed the other ones as time went on. There was probably some rideaway issues. I mean, I wasn't involved with all of those projects, but we saw an opportunity here for this project to solve a problem that we've never been able to solve for other dealerships. And so we thought it was a good idea to help, to preserve an area where autos can be dropped off outside of that center lane in this instance.
And then I just had one question for the applicant. Is that the preference for the dealership to have the loading zone or to load in the middle?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I don't think we took issue when staff, when we met with staff, I don't remember when we first had that conversation, but it was pretty early on, since we were able to accommodate it, you know, we don't take any issue with doing it. I'm sure anybody would like more.
Loading.
Or parking, too. But, but the, yeah, I think having the loading zone is probably better, I think, from the city's perspective, so we're happy to accommodate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
As far as questions to the staff, the PowerPoint you gave, is that online?
I'm not sure if it's posted online at the moment, but it certainly can be.
Okay, well, I'd like to get in the habit in the future so the public can have better, more meaningful commentary and participation, that if we're going to do a PowerPoint here at the meeting, that it be posted online unless it's just not available at the time, and certainly afterwards. But preferably before, and to us as well. Dustin, nice to see you again.
Yeah, you too.
The Kia power presentation, where is, has that been made available publicly before? Like, did you show it at the hearings?
It's a very similar presentation as at the planning commission. So in a sense, that presentation is available, but no, we provide it to the city just so it can be uploaded here this morning, so, but we're happy to, you know, we take no issue if you want to post it whenever you want.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to post that as well, as long as there's no issue of it being, I mean, now that it's been publicly unveiled, I guess there really is no issue. So, yeah, we'd appreciate that. And I understand you don't always present that ahead of time, but we should have it here. Those are my questions.
Okay, and I have two questions. One, the car wash was brought up. Could you put up the site plan and just show us where the separate car wash building would be?
Yes, give me one second to pull that up. So the car wash, there's a one-story detached car wash facility right here. You can also kind of see it's light, but the Hammerhead turnaround required by the fire department is right here between those two buildings.
Got it. So in the Hammerhead drawing, the car wash was represented by three parking spots?
Yeah, I believe those were the bays inside of the car wash.
Yeah, it's kind of like the floor plan of the building, so you're seeing the...
Understood, thank you. The second question would be on the monument sign. You mentioned that our code allows for larger monument signs, and I believe your language was, when they're, you know, similar to, you know, what people enjoy in the neighborhood. That was horrible paraphrasing, wasn't it?
Yep.
Could you, could you share with us, did you look at the size of the signs of the other dealerships, and did you compare those in square footage?
We did, and I do have a slide somewhere that shows it. Let me figure out where that slide is. I have the numbers for you. Okay, so these are some photos of the existing dealership's monument signs, based on the permit records for these properties. BMW currently has a monument sign that's 25 feet in height and 150 square feet in area, which is the maximums allowable per that code section I'd mentioned earlier. The Cadillac monument sign is 20 feet in height and 100 square feet in area. Audi's monument sign is 25 feet in height and 150 square feet in area. Again, that one is the maximum height and area allowable. And the Mercedes monument sign is 24 feet 10 inches and 133 square feet in area.
And that was a Kia?
The last one was Mercedes, was 24 feet 10 inches. Oh, 20 feet in height and 105 square feet in area.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing for members of the public wishing to speak on this item. I currently have three speaker cards. If anybody would like to speak, please fill out a speaker card at the back of the room and get that to our city clerk. We'll begin with Megan Jacoby, who is speaking on behalf of Bob Smith BMW.
Hello, hi, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Megan Jacoby. I'm the Finance and Sales Operations Director at Bob Smith BMW, where I've worked for 22 years now. And I've also worked alongside the Smith family, whom I've also known for over 35 years. So I've known the Smith family for a very long time. Tim, Ann, and Catherine are away on their planned work trip that they planned many months ago, so they asked me to come here and read the following statement on their behalf. And this is from Tim. Our family has been operating dealerships for more than 100 years now. In addition, my daughters and I have been operating Bob Smith BMW here in Calabasas for more than 20 years, longer than any other dealership's operators on Calabasas Road. We do not operate any other dealership. We are in the dealership on a daily basis. It is our livelihood. We are known as having one of the premier BMW dealerships in the United States. We know Calabasas, and more specifically, we know Calabasas Road. When we presented the shortcomings of the Kia project to the planning commission, we should have been taken more seriously. Commission Chair Fassberg dismissed our concerns based on her experience in other car dealerships as a customer, contradicting Catherine Andrews, who has been our general manager for the past 10 years and service manager for four years prior to that tenure. There was no time given to consider the impact of customer traffic entering and exiting, the various delivery, vendor, and flatbed tow trucks entering and exiting, and all the shuttling of inventory back and forth due to woefully inadequate parking capacity. The planning commission voiced no concern that all this traffic in utilizing one narrow driveway might be insufficient to serve a dealership that Kia expects to far exceed the new car sales volume of Bob Smith BMW. The proximity of the proposed Kia building to Calabasas Road and the narrow frontage leave little room to move the driveway's entrance from the street eastward, create more parking areas, and widen the driveway along the building's west perimeter. All measures that would greatly enhance safety. The only solution is to move the footprint of the building further away from Calabasas Road. I was asked to tell the city council what we want. Pure and simple, I'm requesting that the council engage a professional traffic engineer to do a thorough study of this project's impact with a full understanding of the daily activities of an automobile dealership that sells more than 2,000 new cars a year. I have been operating Bob Smith BMW for almost 25 years and have never resisted any project proposed by the city. This project must not compromise the safety of the many motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists, transport operators, employees, and customers. I've said that all along, we are not opposed to a dealership project on that property. Faithful to our DNA, we have always done what's right and what's needed throughout our history in Calabasas, and we expect the same from our new neighbors. Clearly, we need the city to help us achieve that. Respectfully, Tim Smith.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Morris.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I really failed out the card to be here for questions, might have the dealership. I am the operating partner for Hello Auto. I work inside our six dealerships currently on a daily basis. As previously that, we were in Minneapolis for 17 years with dealerships. So really, what I'm here is if you have more functional day-to-day questions, I'm happy to answer and just available. Other than that, I don't really have a statement for you.
Thank you. And the last speaker card I have is for Dustin Womer. Nope, and we already heard from him. Seeing no other cards, city clerk, do we have any other speakers? None? Okay, seeing no other speakers, I will now close the public hearing. At this point in time, it's time for our council consideration and comments. We'll go ahead and begin. Should we start on the other side? Councilmember Weintraub?
Can we dive into the driveway issue? Can you pull up the...
Yes, I have it, I have it pulled up.
Oh.
Okay, there we go.
Can you go to the aerial slide? No, keep going.
Which one?
The aerial slide. Photo.
Oh.
Yeah.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, can you walk through the, can you show the existing driveway of BMW? Can you just walk through the driveway, the width, everything, the ingress and egress?
Yes, so in this rendering, this is the existing BMW dealership right here.
See, wait, where's the point? The pointer's not, oh, there you go. Okay.
This is the existing BMW dealership driveway right here. Again, this is looking southwest, looking at the proposed dealership site. So we have the existing secondary BMW driveway right here, proposed Kia driveway. In this rendering, the driveways have a 11-foot separation, so the property line is between those. And then if you're asking about the alternate driveway location, that would shift the driveway another nine feet, so that would be about right here where my cursor is in this image. The existing Spurling Nursery driveway is about in the middle of the property, so that would be about right here where my cursor is. Does that help?
And we don't have pictures, there's no way to scroll down to the other dealerships to show? We don't have that on the here, right?
Not in this rendering.
Not in this rendering, okay. And the concern when people leave, when people are exiting to Calabasas Road, that's been, that's been addressed by staff and our traffic engineer?
Yes, we do have our public works director and our traffic engineer, Tom Miracle, if you want to hear from them at all.
Sure, that'd be great.
I'll take this mic.
What's the, what's the normal divide between driveways?
So ideally, we would have about 300 feet between the driveways, which is just not physically possible, because the lot is not even, it's 200 feet wide. So due to that, we would like to see the driveways as close together, really shared is where we start. We would like to see those driveways as close together as possible because the drivers are able to communicate better. And if you've driven in a block, if you go to, you know, city of LA in denser areas and you get in those areas where you have the driveways very close to each other, it can be difficult, right? You can get stuck behind someone making a left that you don't want to make, and then you're swerving back into traffic. So there's a reason why 300 feet is ideal, not just in Calabasas, but that's kind of the general standard in Southern California.
And then I know I asked you this when we met, but if I'm at the Kia dealer and I'm exiting and I want to go left, and someone's at the BMW dealer and they want to go right, right, following, how do you prevent that intersection of like the cars?
Well, that's where being fairly close is better, because they'll see each other, so they can communicate with each other. When you start to get into distances that aren't 300 but are in-between, you have drivers that may not see each other, and they enter the roadway, and that's where you have, I guess, a greater chance of a potential conflict. But here, being so close to each other, they will be able to see each other.
And was there ever a consideration of like no-left turn out of the lot?
It wasn't proposed in any of the studies we saw, but that is something that could be implemented. However, there's other driveways on this corridor into BMW's primary driveway and Audi's driveway that have full turning movements, left turns in and out, and they operate, and we haven't had any complaints about those.
But they're not so close to each other? Like, when you exit Audi and I go left, there's, I'm not, there's no other cars that could be going right?
And actually, those, those two driveways, BMW and Audi, are about 100 feet apart, and it's actually not really ideal either. I think that the configuration here, being closer, again, would be, would be actually an improvement over that, because you'll see those other drivers right away.
Okay, I'll have more questions after the rest of you.
Mayor Protem?
Okay, as long as we're, Curtis, as long as we're on this thing, I, too, thought of the no-left turn issue. The driveway you just mentioned that's 100 feet apart, but that's in the same dealership, right?
Yeah, that's just west.
But that's in, both in the Audi dealership?
No, no, that's the BMW primary driveway to the Audi.
Oh, to the Audi, okay. Now, okay. I would suggest that if no other remedy is available, and I'm going to go through a bunch of things, that we, that we impose that requirement. I see that as being a significant safety danger, especially with some of these larger vehicles, that one makes a left, the other makes a right. And I actually walked it, and there's a, I don't know whether that barrier's going to stay up, but there's a barrier in between the two driveways. She can't really see at all. Is that, do you know, is that going to stay up?
No, that site distance will be improved with the project.
Well, I mean, the, the fence with the growth on it, is that staying, is that going to be totally down, or?
No, that will not be, that will be removed, not the whole thing, not the whole length, but I'll look to Glenn how much is going to be removed. It will go, because they're dedicating rideaway, so it's all moving back into the property.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have a full linear distance, but yeah, there's a site triangle, what we call for a sightline distance, that it would need to be nothing more than 42 inches high. So it's going to come down to gain the sightlines.
Okay, but you still can't really see what's going on on the other side entirely, correct?
You will be able to, correct, after it comes down.
You will.
Absolutely.
It's going to be, let's see, three feet tall, four feet tall?
Three and a half, at the most. It could be short.
But and the growth, what about, there's trees and brush and all that, is that being taken out?
It's all coming out.
Okay. I want to revisit that issue of no-left turn, though, at some point. Let me talk about the driveway locations. What was the reason why the talks broke down about a shared driveway? Because to me, there's a lot of wasted space caused by that barrier. If there were easements granted or a shared area, that would free up some space, wouldn't it?
So I'll just say that as far as public works goes, on the traffic engineering side, we're a fan of the shared driveway. I'll look to maybe Michael or Glenn to talk about why that didn't work in this particular case.
Michael?
Yeah, good evening. We, we had several meetings with the applicant, as well as the neighboring property owner, and there was just not a consensus for the two of them to cooperate on that. Some of the things that were expressed was that there's concerns over maintenance and whose responsibility for cars going in and out, and, you know, one, one dealership might, well, for example, in the case of Kia, that would be their primary driveway, so that therefore they would take the lion's share of people going in and out of that shared driveway, and then on the neighbor... And then, on the neighboring property side, they would then have to pay for maintenance. So...
But doesn't that waste many feet of line, just with the barrier and the dividing line?
Yeah, and also, I think they're... Both dealerships are worried about liability between, you know, people going, crossing property lines without a very clear delineation.
You couldn't just draw... Instead of the barrier of several feet, you couldn't just draw like a dotted line?
We absolutely approached this to both sides. We tried to get a consensus on that, but neither sides were willing to compromise on that. And we can't force them, but we tried.
That's unfortunate. It's unfortunate. The 77 spaces that you mentioned, somebody mentioned, I think you did, Jaclyn, is that... That's... They're at the minimal level, right? That's...
Yes.
But they do meet the parking requirements?
Yes, 77 required, and they're proposing 77.
Is there any chance that the requirement would change? Like, is there anything that could be... Like, if they wanted to expand, or if they wanted to... Or if their volume were higher, would any of that change the requirement?
Not necessarily based on volume, but if they were to expand in terms of the footprint or the square footage of the building, then that would increase accordingly.
Okay. Can we go back to the slide with the signs? It was toward the end. Maybe it was Kia's presentation. This one, I didn't need as much. I needed... I liked the one that the Kia had, which showed me the actual, the signs we're going to... Oh, here. Okay, so is this what you're talking about when you say sign one, sign two, sign three?
Yes. So, there's...
So, can you take me through those?
Yes. So, sign one is this monument... Sign one is this monument sign. And then, the other signs, the five signs, are the building-mounted signs. So, there will be three on the front. The delivery, I think, is obscured a little bit by the tree in this rendering, but there will be three on the front and then two on the side. So, five total mounted to the building.
And they meet our... Those meet our requirements?
Yes. Each individual sign is within the sign area limits, and then collectively for a dealership, their building-mounted signage must be no more than the linear frontage of the building. So, the linear frontage is 127 feet. The total combined area of each of the building-mounted monument, each of the building-mounted signs is 125 square feet.
Now, when I go out there now, I see a lot of, you know, those trucks bringing in the cars that are right in between those yellow lines in the middle. Are you telling me that the Kia dealership will not be using that?
No. Per the conditions of approval and the resolution that we've drafted, they are to load and unload within their loading zone at the curb.
Okay. But they will be... If they're coming from the east, they will be making a left using that, correct?
Yes, and we do have... Perhaps our traffic engineer or Public Works Director would better be able to talk about that.
Any safety implications in that?
So, we... It's going to take a little time, but we have a roundabout project at Merrell and Calabasas Roads, so trucks will be able to turn around. So, if a truck is coming, I think you said east, but if a truck is coming, say, west, and it wants to turn around to then park at the curb...
I said from the east.
It will be going. If it's coming east and already heading that direction, it will just be able to pull off.
I mean, if I didn't say it, I meant from the east. It's going to...
Okay, yeah.
Is there going to be... Because I looked, it's very... With all those car dealerships like that, it just seems like there's not a lot of room for them to even stack up there and turn. Is there any traffic implication there or safety implication with multiple trucks being lined up there?
Well, they'll just be able to park the one truck in front of Kia, and other trucks, say, other dealerships will have to park further up along the curb to the west.
Okay. I mean, I have a couple other comments, but I think I'll stop right here and... Oh, I did have one other one. The alternate driving location, what was the reason that that was rejected?
Ultimately, it was the Planning Commission's decision to move forward with the... Well, to recommend to the council approval of the primary project and not the alternate. One of the reasons that was discussed by the commissioners was the fact that it would shorten that loading zone by about nine feet by shifting the driveway over by about nine feet. So, that would make the area in which the trucks are able to... When they drop off the cars, they back up and they need space to turn into the driveway. So, it would just shorten that area by about nine feet. And the trucks are approximately 75 feet in length.
All right. My final comment then would be that I do think it's a challenging piece of property, and I think that it would be nice to move the project back. But having looked at it and traversed it many times in the past, it's just too much grading. I'm assuming that's the reason why it's so far up the front.
Yes, as well as the oak trees. I think the applicant had mentioned that previous projects that looked at moving it farther backward, you run into the oak woodland at the rear of the property.
Okay. I may ask for a short second round, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you, and thank you for the very thorough presentation as well. Just to confirm a few questions, they aren't even questions. They're just the setback, as I heard, between the two dealerships on either side, our requirement is zero. Is that correct?
The front setback is 20, and they're at 57. The...
On the sides?
On the sides, on the sides is zero. Yes.
Then what does the seven foot, two-inch setback on the east relate to?
That is the setback that they're proposing for the pedestrian walkway. So, while the city doesn't have a setback requirement, the fire department requires that they be able to... I think the applicant had it in his slide. The fire department requires they be able to drive around on the one side and that they can get pedestrian access up the other side. So, they have to have at least a five-foot walkway per the fire department.
Okay. I took notes, and I thought it was off your presentation. Seven foot two on the east, 30 foot, about 30 feet, something on the west.
Yes.
And I recall a note about no setback requirement. That relates to the same pedestrian walkway we're speaking of?
Right, yes. There's none on the city's end. The five feet comes from the fire department's end.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that for me. The two driveways, again, it's already been covered. My concerns, jumping ahead a little bit, have due always with safety. The issues have been brought up, the left turns, et cetera. If you could put up that one slide, do you mind again, with the two side by side?
Yes. Is that the aerial rendering, the bird's-eye view rendering?
Sure, the aerial is fine. That's good enough. And this might be a question for the BMW representative who's here today, but staff may know. That second driveway for BMW, and I call it second because the main entrance and exit that I always took was the other entrance, is that used primarily for vehicles exiting a certain area, whether it be service, or is it used also for cars entering for some other purpose and parking, if you know?
I believe it is for service and deliveries.
Delivery. I figure mostly delivery, right?
I'll defer to the BMW manager if she'd...
Because service...
I can shout it out or I can...
Oh, please, if that's okay with Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I'm pretty sure that's... Is that more for delivery then?
Yeah, well, if you look on the eastward side, our service department bays, that's where they exit out of the service drive there. Additionally, we have that side, we have used cars, also new cars. So, that driveway is also a very busy driveway that we use. It's not considered our main driveway because our service drive is obviously on the west side. So, that driveway is used a lot for exiting, where they do do a lot of right turns there at that spot. They also do left turns as well. So, it's equally used both for exiting and entry back into the shop that way.
Okay, vehicles will come out and then go back in for more service?
Not directly, not a U-turn, but they'll come out, they'll make a right-hand turn and use whatever route they will if they're driving or service is driving the vehicle to test the vehicle. And then, wherever they're coming back, heading east or westward, they'll make a left-hand turn into that parking lot.
Okay, so that's a primary... Primarily an exit route as opposed to...
I would say majority, it's going to be more of an exit route than an entry, but it is used both for also our new car customers and used car customers as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I would follow up with the comment made earlier about the potential for a right-turn-only, talking about suggestion for the dealership. And I... It's not fair to ask, so I won't ask, but to look into the option of that exit from BMW also being a potential right-turn-only if we're talking about safety and so forth. But I defer to the experts who are sitting here before myself. But at least for the Kia dealership, if approved, I think that would help as far as safety potential goes. Deliveries, just confirming, and I think I asked this earlier, but I just heard loading zone on the curb. Earlier, I thought I asked the question. Maybe I didn't. Maybe I just wrote it down again. There were... On the diagrams presented, that they're loading on premises, if I'm correct, if... In your presentation?
They will be loading at the front. Let me pull up that slide.
Can you go... I know the front slide. I'm sorry, I'm referring to other slide, another slide you had, showing the two-story buildings going back one or two. One more, maybe? Right? That isn't it.
Which one?
It showed a loading area.
A loading area. This is the one that shows their loading area. Their loading area is highlighted in yellow right here.
Okay, but there's another one that I'm referring to. It's hard without the...
Is it the one inside the building?
Inside the building, correct.
Got it. Okay, apologies.
No problem. It's, again, the first time seeing these slides as well.
Is it this one right here?
Yes.
Okay.
So, no, that's entrance. That doesn't... There was a slide, I guess I'd have to see the whole presentation, but that I saw, thought inside showed similar to this, a loading area.
It could be the one that the applicant had showed, is that it shows these 12 spaces for... This is for their service area. They have like a queuing area for when vehicles are going to be serviced.
Okay.
Do you mean for service, or do you mean for the drop-off of new vehicles?
No, I mean for drop-off of new vehicles, and I thought it was presented that there was a loading area. I believe it was your presentation, but it's, again, hard without the documents in front of us to look at.
But just to, I think, to answer your question, the loading area is going to be at the curb. It's going to be this yellow area right here. The applicant could probably explain the issue better, but my understanding is that for legal or contractual reasons, the 75-foot-long vehicles that do the drop-off...
Right.
...won't actually enter private property to turn around for, I think, liability reasons.
Understand that completely. Do you by chance have a hard copy or printed copy of the slide presentation I can look at in between?
We can make copies.
And all of these, all of these images are in the plans, so nothing is new. So...
I think Councilmember Shapiro is looking to identify a slide that he saw earlier.
Right.
So that he can have it called up on the screen.
Okay, but I'll run up and go on to something else. And again, this is a question for staff on traffic, and I guess this would be for Curtis. Again, a concern, I'm sure of all of us, is safety on the roadway, on this particular roadway with a lot of dealerships. Thank goodness. We are thrilled for all our dealerships, our current dealerships and all dealerships, as we planned long ago, an auto overlay zone here with help from staff and city's great wisdom, I believe. But the concern for safety and the traffic backing up, what... Have you looked into the potential concern? When there's an accident on the 101 at Lost Hills, or an accident at Tapanga on the 101 heading that way, traffic backs up Moreau Road, cutting over to Calabasas Road, turns into a mass parking lot, as does Mulholland and every other city route available in the city. Have you looked into that as with an analysis for this dealership?
Well, that was covered with the ISM&amp;D, and so, traffic wasn't identified as a significant concern during that study. And we didn't do any further study in Public Works beyond that, other than reviewing the study provided to us by ATE. And so, we agree, though. We don't feel that there's a concern.
Okay, thank you. That was the answer. And then, looking at the oak tree mitigation, and I think we're talking about number 102 on the... Hopefully, I got that right off the slides in the report. The heritage oak, do we know... It looks like a larger oak. Do you know the age of that oak in particular, or how large it is?
I do not know the age of the tree, but it is 46 inches in diameter, and we measure that at four and a half feet above grade, so...
Okay, so that's a fairly large oak tree.
It's a fairly large tree. Mm-hmm.
And is the mitigation that that's, I heard, going to be planted behind, or some of the oak trees are going to be planted behind, is it going to be a similar-sized oak tree, and hopefully it'll take?
Yes. Per the conditions of approval for the project, they will be required to provide a mitigation and monitoring plan to us. And so, one of the mitigation measures that's required is an inch-for-inch replacement. What they're proposing to do is plant that inch-for-inch replacement of all trees. They're going to be removed on-site. So, if you can see in this image here, this is going to be the oak tree mitigation replacement area. So, I think they have in their landscape plan a little bit more details to what they're proposing at the moment, but they just have to meet that. It's 64 inches in total that's to be removed, so they have to plant 64 inches replacement.
So, it's possible there'll be smaller oak trees, a larger number, not necessarily a larger oak tree?
Yes.
The city's guidelines require the smaller oak trees as mitigation trees because the attrition's a lot less. You know, the larger the tree that you plant, the more likely it is to die over the long run. But we have a monitoring period of up to five years to ensure that if they do die during those five years, that monitoring period, that we replant new trees to replace them.
Great, thank you. That's what I was looking for. I know we have the ordinance, and we were talking about one of the proponents of the ordinance earlier on tonight from City Council. Last question on this for me for now is the car wash and the environmental impact, all that, and the drainage and the hydrology reports are on page 33 of the report that I did read. Is there any concern of potential soil erosion or any other environmental impacts for a car wash at a lower but higher elevation? It'll have to drain down, obviously, to connect to the drainage system.
No, I mean, the hydrology's been reviewed by the Public Works Department through that report. I mean, all site drainage has to be collected, treated before it's released back through the stormwater system. And I believe in the car wash, that water's all self-contained as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Albert?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, there's a benefit to being the last one, and there's a benefit to being the first one. And Councilmember Weintraub brought up the most important point, and we've all weighed in on it, and that's the concern about the exit and the problems it can bring on. I'd appreciate it if you could bring that frontage picture up again.
Is it this one?
Yeah, thank you. Well, when I see this picture, knowing, as we all know this area, we've traveled there, many of us have used the nursery for things over the years. We've walked to the back. We know the property very, very well. When I see and take a look at that with the traffic circulation element that happens at different times of the day, the weight of that traffic, depending on the hour, sometimes it can be very significant. It can be very fast. There's a variety of things that could happen. So, much like when, I think our biggest concern, and maybe I can illustrate it a different way, when you get a four-way stop and there's two cars, and you know you're going to give the right of way to somebody, but you always look in the windshield and you wave somebody off, and you'll acknowledge, like you're there first, or if it's a tie, who's going to go first? You know, you point to someone, you go first. And usually, it works out unless you have a wild one. And that happens, too. They get to the stop sign, and they stop, they look, they got a moment they can get in, and they go. So, with all the traffic when I look at this, and the concerns I have, and we value safety the most because an accident that could happen here could jam traffic up, it could start a series of issues with services that may come, an ambulance or otherwise, or sheriff's department. It caused confusion. We want to do our best to avoid that. And somehow, I just see two cars that aren't looking at each other. They're talking about their purchase of a potential vehicle, probably like them, and talking about the price and what are we going to do. And they're going to jump out and make a right turn. Even if they both make two right turns at the same time with a no-left turn, there's a potential for a real problem. Some are going to turn out faster than others. Sometimes, they're only going to look to the left, even though they're making a right turn to see if the left is clear, and the person on the right is going to make their turn, and they're not seeing that person on the right going out. It's very concerning to me about that. I love, just speaking about the project itself, love the project, and love the detail that you've gone into creating what would ordinarily need a large space. This is the way dealerships might be in the future now. I bought my Tesla from the showroom. Your cars will be off lot. Everything you've done, the mitigation for the tree... Everything you've done, the mitigation for the trees, the list is as long as it could be. You'd be commended on all of that. But this is a safety issue, and it only takes one time for something to happen, and then why didn't we think of that ahead of time? So there hasn't really been a great solution to this. I've been wrestling with this with staff, community development, over and over, and there's still, it seems to be a take it or leave it. I happen to like the idea. I hate to put this off, but my thought is really to get an outside opinion, and that would be a traffic engineer or someone else to give a third opinion. So we have vetted this project properly. We're not traffic managers here. We've got our opinion and our thoughts, but, and it's up to us now to make the decisions. And I thought the Planning Commission did a wonderful job of going through it. I watched that entire Planning Commission meeting twice. But we still don't have the answer to this problem, and it concerns me. And I think everybody will feel relieved and better once we've satisfied that to everybody's satisfaction and have some other opportunities. So on all levels, I'm great with it. I'm just not great with that particular location and how we're going to handle it. Thank you.
Hey, I have a couple of questions as well. Perhaps Curtis, you're heading in the right direction.
Okay.
Have we had any issues, any accidents, any history with the Spurling driveway to date?
I don't have that data offhand. I'm going to look to Tom to just for some anecdotal information. Anything just anecdotal? We could come back with some more information on that, but...
But none has been brought forward?
In my year and a half here, I haven't had heard of any issues there.
Okay. And is your opinion that the driveways being closer is better than being the 75 or 100 feet apart that they are now?
Yes. If they can't get to the 300, we prefer them to be as close as possible.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any other, you were walking up to the podium, if you had something else to share?
I was just going to state that I think we all share Councilmember Albrecht's concerns about speed and communication among drivers, and that just exists everywhere. And you mentioned the wild one. We will never out-engineer the wild one. You know, that happens on every roadway. It's not something we can always control. But again, the closer those driveways are together, the more likely drivers can communicate, even the wild ones. It's when you get into that gray area, that's in between the, you know, not quite 300 feet, where people start to make assumptions. But the closer we are, just this happens whether it's a driveway or just in general driving, the closer that the cars are, the slower people are going to drive, and the more aware that we all become, because there's just more going on around us. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you.
If I, sorry, if I may, I do also want to point out from a process standpoint, the SEQA document does look at traffic safety. So traffic congestion is no longer actually an issue that SEQA can control, so we now have VMT, but traffic safety is still an issue that SEQA can consider. And so when the comment, when the comment was submitted from Bob Smith regarding the concern over safety, there was additional research done and analysis to make sure that the city was vetting that properly, including going back to and having another third-party traffic engineer evaluate and analyze the situation. So again, those, and that memo was included in the Planning Commission and Council report. So it's not as if this has not been looked at. It has been looked at, and it has been vetted by several different traffic engineers.
Okay, and I see our traffic engineer is at the podium, so let's give him a moment to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. So I just looked up...
And I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you make sure to introduce yourself?
My name is Tom Miracle, and I'm the Contract City Traffic Engineer for the City of Calabasas. I just looked up on our online collision resource, and collisions between January 2013 and December 2022, there was one collision that was in proximity to where the existing Spurling driveway was during that period.
That driveway's been out of commission since then, so that's not a valid statistic.
Yeah. That's as far back as the data goes.
No, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying it's not a very helpful statistic, because Spurling nursery closed right around that time.
We don't have any data that goes back, yeah, we don't have any data that goes back when it was actually an inactive nursery.
But also when Spurling was open, the driveway was further over.
Yeah.
That's like the big...
Yes, it was. And to my point, I want to say that, you know, what we heard from our Public Works Director is that when the driveway was further apart, it's less likely that the people exiting those driveways would be acknowledging each other. And so closer together in this particular case would be the better of the two choices. I'm also looking at the width of the lot being 200 feet. We can't get to the 300 feet that might be recommended for a scenario like this, and so the alternative would be to declare this lot unbuildable. But Spurling has already been there, so we know the site is buildable. Be very difficult to declare otherwise at this point in time. I did hear arguments as well, or comments as well, about the number of cars in the inventory. It's my understanding that there is no requirement for the number of cars in the inventory, the number of parking spaces. You know, we would be holding the applicant to the city, you know, standards as far as, you know, parking on the street and everything else, where we would expect a certain amount of decorum there in the, you know, in the neighborhood. I think having the loading zone in front of the property is a great first step in that, in that if we have the loading zone there, they're tied to their space. I do hear the concerns of the neighbors, but I don't hear enough evidence that this site and this project, as it's presented before us, does not meet our requirements. As far as I can tell, the project has checked all of the boxes, and I am leaning in favor of this project. Two of my councilmembers have already indicated they wanted to speak again, and I'll open the floor for everyone after this. So those are my closing thoughts, but if somebody else wanted to make additional comments before a motion is made?
I just had a question maybe for Tom, because I had brought it up before, but I do not claim to be an expert on traffic engineering, but what are your thoughts about a no-left turn? I'm just so worried about someone going left and someone going right in such a tight space, but if you could address that.
Yeah, that's something that we thought about. And so just for clarification, right now, the BMW driveway with a double-double-yellow in the center of the roadway, it is a right-turn-in, right-turn-out-only driveway now. People make left turns out of the driveway even though it's not legal.
Sorry, I was talking about Kia, right here coming out here, when you go right here and someone's going left here.
Correct. I'm just trying to clarify what's going on at BMW right now. So for Kia, we could make it right-turn-in, left-turn-in, right-turn-out-only post-no-left-turn signs. The council has the purview to do that, we can implement that, no problem. I think an option could be, is we could hold that decision till later and come back in a year after it's built and say, how's it going? Should we limit left turns out if it seems like it's not working? But again, it's a decision that the council can make. I'm comfortable with it. Obviously, our preference, as was stated by Curtis, is that they do a shared driveway, and as Michael has said, we tried that route, that's the safest way to go. Having them in close proximity so that the drivers can acknowledge each other and communicate is, we think, the best alternative with full access, because we know people will make that left turn even if we try to prohibit it.
But from a traffic engineer's standpoint, could you see the validity of no turn, like could you see reasons for there not to be a left turn out of Kia?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to build off of what Peter said. I think this is a great project, and I think there'll be a lot of benefits to the city. My only concern from the beginning was this driveway situation and the safety implication. So I think if we could address that, and if it means the no-left turn, I would like to, I don't want to wait a year until there's an accident, I'd rather do that upfront, so.
If that's a motion I had to amend, I'll second it.
I don't know if it's...
As a condition.
I was just going off of what you said.
Are you making a motion?
Oh, I think other people wanted to speak.
Well, I want to speak, too.
We can still continue to speak after a motion is made.
Sure, that would be my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have two things here that I wanted to go over. One was that I do want to support the Kia dealership, and I intend to vote for it, but before I would, I would require that no-left turn thing. That's the least we could do. My first preference is for a shared driveway, but it looks like that's never going to happen, and we can't force it on the parties if they're not going to agree. Would have been nice. My second comment is that, you know, having worked with Bob Smith, you know, just as a councilmember relationship, I mean, since he first came here over 20 years ago, he's only complained twice in the city's history. One was the monument sign that caused a big uproar over here on the council, and the second one is this. I've never heard him complain about anything before, which is doubly why I'm so intent on putting that no-left turn on Kia. They've gotten pretty much what they wanted here, and they can live with that. It's safer for them, it's safer for everybody. We can't impose that on Bob Smith, and I wouldn't, because he's already, it's pre-existing, and we can't just simply impose a requirement. So I'd like a sign there, like you suggested, I think, Tom, you suggested the sign maybe posting and as a condition. The other thing I thought of, and maybe I would, next to that driveway, and maybe Curtis, you could comment on this, I'm still concerned with that barrier in between. Is somebody going to be looking at that before it's just signed off on? I mean, there's a lot of foliage there, and it's really not that visible right now, and you're telling me that's going to be cut back and removed?
I think it might be helpful to go to one of the site plans, or even maybe the rendering, we can look at it. But the drivers that are coming out of both driveways will have adequate distance to see each other. They're not going to be pulling out into the driveway apron and there's, with a tall wall or vegetation...
But that's what it is now. I'm just saying, what's it going to look like after we're done? What is changing that's going to make it more visible?
I think we're looking for the site plan or the rendering that will help us kind of...
Right now, what you also have is a condition where the Kia property or the old Spurling property extends past the existing sidewalk. All of that's going to be pulled back, because they're dedicating that 20 feet. So what you're going to have across the Kia property will be a sidewalk in alignment with the existing BMW sidewalk, and then even from there, where a car approaches that sidewalk, there's going to have to be that line of sight triangle that Glenn had mentioned earlier.
Okay, I'd like staff to specifically look at that before you sign it off.
Yeah, absolutely, that's...
And just make sure it's safe. That's my only concern. I don't care about the aesthetics.
Of course.
Or I don't want to intrude on people. And finally, Jaclyn, this letter that's addressed to you on March 10th of this year, do you have any other comments about the contents of the Bob Smith letter that you haven't addressed?
Which letter specifically are you asking about?
The one at the back of the packet, it's Attachment L. It's addressed to you, I'm assuming you got it, unless somebody else took care of it.
Yes, yeah, as the planner of the project, did you have a specific question about that?
Was there anything you haven't addressed that you would like to address regarding this specific letter?
No, not regarding that specific letter at all.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second to approve the project with a no-left turn sign coming out of the Kia dealership, but if Councilmember Albert or Shapiro would like additional comments before we vote?
No, I'm very satisfied with having a no-left turn. We can change things, we can adjust things, I'm glad, happy to see the project move forward, but we also want to be careful, and I think with the thought of maybe removing it, or as time goes on, potentially, if we can, that would be nice, or reinforcing it as necessary with some kind of a larger sign, or whatever we need to do to keep that safe. But I would be supportive of this project once that sign is on.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you, and I would just follow my colleague's comments. Mayor Protem mentioned it, Tim Smith has been, and Bob Smith have been an amazing business for the city, amazing community members, and very, very supportive. So it's not, this is not a personal decision in any way, shape, or form that I view it. It's one that we, years and years ago, made a decision about an auto overlay zone for this area. There are great dealerships. We all are concerned that these driveways, at least I've heard, are so close in proximity to each other, yet understand there was no agreement between the dealerships to do a shared driveway. That's their prerogative. That is a business decision as well. I think, I don't think, I know we're not experts up here, but out of common sense, a common sense solution appears to have come up from the council, which is at least make it a right-turn-only out of that one, out of the Kia dealership, to hopefully preclude impacts that might otherwise occur. It's still going to be up to the drivers leaving both dealerships, or whatever it might be, for service testing, to actually look out for the other vehicles. Many cars in the city, I'm sure we've all seen, drive without necessarily considering other drivers in the, or other vehicles, or pedestrians, or bicyclists, whatever it may be. So I think that is a good solution from up on the dais by the council, so I support that. I think it's, in looking at everything that has been done and listening to the excellent report, site plan review checks the box, oak tree permit with the living oak trees being replaced, replanted, checks the box, lot merger, scenic corridor, and the sign permit complies, as has been discussed, 20 by 105 is within the realm of acceptable signage in the front. So all those things check the box, along with it being in the auto overlay zone. While I wish we had a lot more space and we could do, our staff and the new dealership could do a lot more to massage the entry and exit, and even build back further without problems, that isn't the case. This does comply, and I do support this as well with the amendment.
Okay, so before we proceed to a formal vote, I do have one question for our planning staff, if I might, in the event that we do approve this, and maybe after the fact, the adjacent parcel and the applicant perhaps reconvene and reach agreement on a shared driveway. Would that have to come back to us?
I was going to say the same thing.
What's that?
We both thought the same thing, all of us.
Would it have to come back to us, or could we give you authority to approve that if it so happens in the future?
We have authority, yeah, we have authority to make minor adjustments to a project. I think that's an adjustment that we can make internally.
Councilmember Weintraub, the motion is yours. Would you care to amend your motion to give the Director of Development the authority to approve that?
Amended.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have an amended motion on the floor to approve the project subject to a left-turn lane out of the Kia dealership. No left-turn lane out of the Kia dealership. And also granting authority to the Director of Development to review and approve a shared driveway if such an item occurs in the future. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay, we're now done with our agenda for this evening. We just have verbal reports. Does the council have anything to report? I'll start with Councilmember Shapiro. So, are you ready?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's see. Had a Cal City's Policy Committee, although I believe you also had one, so we both attended separately, but on the same dates. Also had a SCAG LCMC, which went over the state and federal budget as, and legislation upcoming. State budget, very, very, very difficult. And then had a two-day SCAG leadership meetings, covered housing, transit, and also LA 28. Talked quite a bit about that and what our, how our city can get involved. And there is one thing which is important but disturbing, and that is they have an economic outlook. And that is, all six counties in Southern California have representatives, experts in the field of economics and everything from covering each of their various counties, and their report back, and I will share that with the city manager and all council, said this upcoming year, two years, could affect cities' budgets, and they gave an economic severe warning signs, not light... And they gave an economic severe warning signs, not light. And this is all six counties in an economic summit. So I want to share that. That was the concerning part, the rest of it was good. And tomorrow morning is a Valley Economic Alliance Board meeting at eight AM. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be joining Councilmember Shapiro tomorrow at eight AM, Valley Economic Alliance. And not much else to report. I've got, had government affairs with the Calabasas Chamber on Monday, which is very good. It's a great way to tune into our county directors and supervisors and happenings that we might miss. So that's my report.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem?
I do not, I want to wish everyone a happy summer break.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Just two quick things. I attended the Mayor's Youth Council and City of Calabasas Creek Cleanup, which was mentioned earlier. Received a lot of positive feedback, and thanks to Melaniese and her team for putting that together. And I also attended the five-year anniversary celebration for Skin Bio. They are a local business in the Gelson's Village Shopping Center, and they opened during COVID. So we weren't able to celebrate them with their opening. So we commemorated their five-year anniversary, and they've become a very successful business in the community, and it was nice to support them.
All right, and I'm not sure if I made this announcement before, but I was in attendance for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy on the sixteenth of June. The ad hoc Fire and Debris Committee has met a couple of times since we last met with no reportable action. And I also wanted to make a note that many of us, including myself, attended the ALAD's Twenty-third Annual Awards Banquet, where our city manager was honored as the City Manager of the Year. And I must say that it was amazing to be there with him while he was presented with this award. The night was all about the deputies and their heroic involvement. I feel that our city manager did not get the attention he deserved, so we're going to shower him with praise every chance that we get. Congratulations once again. And then just for the record, I did have a policy committee meeting for the league, but due to another business commitment, I was not able to attend it, so I did miss this one. But thanks for the shout-out. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Just two items, council members. And thank you again for your kind words. Just again, I very much appreciate it. Two things, just a report. The RFP for the solar energy project is out on the streets, so we're excited about that. Scott helped me remember, I think that's about a thirty-to-forty-day turnaround. And.
Due July thirty-first.
July for thirty-first. So we're excited to have that out and appreciate Scott and others taking the lead on this to get that out. Thank you also to the mayor, who was very instrumental and had good input on through that process. Finally, I was able to visit our Carrying Calabasas Club today over at the Senior Center, and at the same time, received a copy of the Calabasas and Hidden Hills Living magazine. And there was an article about our Carrying Calabasas Club in that journal. Very well-written, highlighted the accomplishments of this group. We are very fortunate to have volunteers like that in our community. I just wanted to do a shout-out again to them.
All right, and we will be returning to closed session for a short meeting right after this. And after that, the City Council will be dark for the month of July, returning to our next regular meeting, which will be held on August thirteenth, 2025. And with that, we are into closed session.